Yeah, the report is in progress.
Go ahead.
Yep. I'd like to call this regular town council meeting to order. Madam Clerk, may I have a roll call, please?
May Councilor Danforth.
Here.
Councilor Domain.
Yeah.
Councilor Higgins.
Ambassador Zoom.
Thank you.
Councilor Mackin.
Here.
Chairman Dorr.
Here.
Councilor McGowan.
Here.
And Councilor Pelletier.
Here.
Would you please all rise and remove your hats and join us in the pledge of allegiance?
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands foundation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
It's it is for now.
Mr. Manager, adjustments to the agenda?
Yes, sir. How are they? Oh, yeah, look at that. We have updated orders number one fifty-four, one fifty-five, and one sixty-three.
Thank you. Seeing no minutes to approve, we'll go right to the special presentation. Resolve number seven dash twenty twenty-four honoring the Sterns High School baseball team. Resolve number seven dash twenty twenty-four. A proclamation honoring the Sterns High School baseball team for their twenty twenty-four season. Whereas the Sterns High School baseball team has demonstrated outstanding skill, sportsmanship, and dedication throughout the twenty twenty-four season. And whereas the team achieved significant success by winning the Northern Maine championship title, showcasing their exceptional talent and teamwork. And whereas the Sterns High School baseball team made an impressive run for the Class D state championship, finishing as runner-up and bringing pride to their school and their community. And whereas four seniors, four senior high school players are graduating this year, having contributed greatly to this team's achievements and serving as role models to their peers. Now, therefore, be it resolved that Town Council of Millinocket, assembled on June twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-four, does hereby recognize, honor, and congratulate the Sterns High School baseball team for their dedication, hard work, and outstanding accomplishments during the twenty twenty-four season.
Okay.
Motion made by Chairman Dorr, seconded by Councilor Danforth. Any council discussion on the order, on the proclamation? Or am I going to go first again?
I'll go first.
I'm glad you will. Councilor McGowan.
Um, I would just like to congratulate the baseball team. It's a fine group of young men that I also have the pleasure of seeing every day at school. You certainly brought some excitement to your school and your community, and we're all very proud of you, and I just want to personally say congratulations.
Go right down the line. Councilor Danforth, do you have anything?
I.
Not sure I'm putting you under any pressure or anything else.
Council McGowan just probably summed up the most of what I would say, but as you know, Sterns sports are a big attraction to the town of Millinocket or to the community members. And I know there are a lot of people, not only your parents and grandparents, other people participate and watch you shine. And so, again, I'm really proud of the team and your participation and taking it as far as you did. Congratulations.
Councilor Domain.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Oh, switch my mic on.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to also congratulate the team, the coaches, the families, all the people that have supported you, the boosters, and all the clubs that that also help fund the organization, all the hours that you guys put into it. You guys are tribute to your to Sterns, to the town of Millinocket, and you should be very proud of yourselves, and congratulations once again.
Councilor Mackin.
I just want to reiterate what everybody has said. Congratulations, you have made this town very proud. You should be proud of yourself. You've done a very good job. Congratulations.
Councilor Pelletier.
I'd like to thank for all the hard work you've done. I've had a great season. Thank you.
Councilor Higgins.
Yes, I want to thank the team and congratulations on the good effort they gave. You've got a lot to be proud of, and your town is very proud of you.
That leaves it up to me, and I just want to go ahead and the word re- to reiterate is kind of lost in this term because what you guys do each year, or the team has done each year under Coach Boynton, is amazing. You don't, you reload, you don't retool, you don't rebuild, you reload, and year after year, it's been like this, and this year is a culmination of a lot of hard work from the coaching staff, the players, the parents. I think that it's amazing what you what you accomplished this year and the, I hate to use the term in the in Northern Maine division, but the ease in which you did it. There were a few close games, but you blew some guys off the field, and you did it with good sportsmanship, skill. It was amazing. And I'd like to congratulate the players, the coaches, the parents who take the time to get their kids to practice and everything else, the school, the administration, the school board, everybody involved with this program because as long as you keep the coaching staff nucleus that you have, I can see this continuing, perpetuating, and being there as a contender every year, every years to come. With that, I'll say thank you. Right then, could I? Have the coaches and players, please. Oh, I'm sorry, we have to vote first. All those in favor, I do this every time. I'm so anxious to give the award out, I do this every time. All those in favor of resolve number seven dash twenty twenty-four. We're going to do this by a verbal vote. Council Higgins. How do you vote?
Aye.
Council Mackin.
Aye.
Council Pelletier.
Aye.
Council Domain.
Aye.
Council Danforth.
Aye.
Council McGowan.
Aye.
And Chairman Dorr, aye. Now, we can go ahead. Gentlemen, would you please come up?
All right. I'm going to get outside. Really long, I figured. Don't be afraid to stand close. Gentlemen. On a great season and great presentation too. Congratulations. Look here.
Right after the presentation.
It's tough.
Yeah. All right then, while we clear out of here, we have a presentation of interest in a painted mural for Sterns High School. Randy Jackson, if you would.
Greetings, councilors, so and the general public, all present. So, I wasn't born in Maine, but I got here as quick as I could. So, that was in seventy-six, and I've been driving by the Sterns High School for many years, and this is just a slide showing the power of art and how it can lift you up. And I don't know if you've been driving around Maine, but there have been several nice murals applied to buildings that are really interesting and powerful. Magic of Mr. Jameson.
All right.
Yeah. Okay, so the Boreal Theater, our agenda is, we see this as an opportunity, murals of inspiration, and art as an economic stimulator. And and part of the Boreal Theater, we are the the ex facto arts community here in Millinocket. So, next slide. This is Sterns High School. This is the gymnasium, and I I think it's a beautiful blank canvas. And, you know, to have students go into that building every day, to me, it kind of reminds me of a prison, but a prison wall, you know? They just needed towers on the side. Anyway, I I I think that this would be an excellent opportunity for the school department and the students and a committee and a muralist to get together and perhaps use this canvas for art. You know, I could envision a large patriot Minuteman mascot on that wall or otherwise. Next slide, please. And again, just the barren nature of the school from the outside is really not inviting. Next slide. So, you know, I I just put together some random murals. These don't necessarily have to be, of course, you know, I look at that wall and those walls as an opportunity. You can, you know, Google art murals, and there are many. Next slide. So, I come to try to engage the community in the schools. Again, we have this lovely blank canvas. We can empower our youth and let them see that we value their abilities, and in turn, this will build their confidence because I really sincerely believe that the student should have a large say in what goes on that wall and how the mural looks. And when I say students, I envision a committee of ten or twelve students, two or three maybe from each class, working together to come to a consensus and and find out how that works, how coming to a consensus works will will be very valuable for them. Next slide. So, this is just another, you know, mural. You don't have to see, you know, street art on the on the building as a mural. Next slide. And, you know, these are some of the artistic, you know, abilities. I think this was done on a high school in Hawaii. Next slide. This, again, the sports figures, you know, possibilities. Next slide. And so, we're down here, Boreal Theater is seeking permission to begin this project, asking to form of to form a committee of townspeople and and school members and and schoolchildren to keep everybody on the same page. And a one-year timeframe, probably a bit longer, probably two years, in order to get all this together. It's going to take quite a bit of work. It's just not slopping paint on the walls. There's a lot that goes into a meaning, meaningful mural that we could have here in Millinocket on the school. Next slide, please. So, these are things to to think about. This is what I've thought over, you know, looking forward to doing this project. There's steps that you have to go through, and people have to work and and take on, you know, responsibility. Next slide, please. Plan, plan, plan. Like I said, this is just the the seed to start. I don't know if there's any interest in in doing this or pursuing this, or the town wants it or the school wants it, but I just look at it as an opportunity. And I believe there are multiple mural spaces at the school and and even granite school. So, next slide. So, I I put together a very crude budget, you know, for this. I I believe it'll probably cost maybe twenty-five thousand.
But this was a, this could be a start.
I am considering donations from alumni. I think if they see the project, see that wall, realize what it could be and what it is, they may see this as a great opportunity.
Highlight Sterns High School. Grants.
You know, I've written a lot of grants. Domain Art Commission, they they like this sort of thing.
The Penobscot County Commissioners like to see, you know, money used for all citizens, not just a few citizens. So, I believe that we can rally together, get a mural up on one of those walls, whether it picks the full wall or then put strip across the wall or however the committee comes up with it. I I see it as a great opportunity. Excellent. So, thank you. I think that we can transform that that wall that Sterns into a wonderful piece of art. And as you can see, there's our vision statement. Our vision is to deepen the presence of the creative parks as a central park, the community library in Millinocket and the surrounding region. I thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Anybody in the council have any questions on this? Councilor Danforth.
Questions, comments? Randy, I think I think it's a great idea. I'm wondering, have you approached the school and to get their feedback and their interest in participating in that?
Yes, and I had invited their presentation. I don't know if they forgot about it.
There's some here.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. So, yeah, so we'll have to get, you know, committee together to start and and see if this is something we even want to do. So, but this is school thing.
Not to put you on the spot, but.
I guess I'm watching.
Come to the mic.
Right.
Would maintain it? After it's been, we'll say, five years, six years? Would it be up to somebody like, will we just go and repaint it? Okay, all of these, you know, questions will be resolved in committee, and and we'll find out how these murals are maintained as we go along. I don't have any.
Randy, I just need you to face the microphone when you're talking, so. People online.
I don't have an answer to that, but murals are painted all over buildings, all throughout the United States, the high schools. They look attractive. They're many things somehow. There are, in my research, I looked up murals, and they actually have a coating that goes over it, embedded graffiti on top of it. You can wash it off easily. So, you know, we're not embedding the wheel here. I want to know if that's a good idea for a mural at the high school. If someone thinks that that's a good idea, fine, we'll look at it real quick. That's all. So, if there's someone from the school that wants to try to sit down and go over there, you know, fine, I think we need a council member on it today, so everybody's informed and knows what's going on from day one.
Randy, if I could suggest something, I would suggest that you do or have the same presentation to the school board with the superintendent present so that they could give maybe, give a little bit more feedback to you as far as what your vision and possibly their vision could be of that wall or walls of Sterns. Does that make sense?
Yeah, we have it.
Okay. Anybody else in the council, do you have anything to say? Councilor McGowan?
Yeah, I was just going to kind of say the same thing. I think it more lies on the school department, what they want to do. So, I think the the way you should go is, as the chairman said, set up something with the school and and discuss it with them, but it definitely needs to be something that they're on board with, supported by the school board, the superintendent, the students. I'm not saying I'm against it, but it really falls up to the school to decide that.
Anybody else from the council? Councilor Domain.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm interested in in like what an exploratory committee would say. I think this is premature. I think, as my other colleagues, that this needs to be discussed at the at the school department level first, see where the thoughts and feelings are there. I'm not necessarily against it either. I think I think something could look beautiful. But if it doesn't work out, then it doesn't work out. So, it's one of those things, get together with them, and then more interested to hear after it's sifted out a little bit, come back to us and then have that discussion.
Anybody else in the council? I I personally, I think that the the latest movement toward having murals within communities to develop and have color in your communities and have things for people to come to the community and see and see what reflects the community sometimes, or sometimes it's just art. And I think we, as Millinocket, could get a shot in the arm as far as art is concerned. So, I I would, I would encourage it, but again, I, after the school, after the school board and the superintendent and that have had their opportunity to weigh in on it and see what they think. Anybody from the public? Yes, please. Could you come up to the microphone? I need name and address, please.
I'm resident of Millinocket, past mayor for forty years, school employee for thirty-two years. I now live in the unorganized territory, so I would have to ask.
You have it.
Working in the very front of Sterns High School, building, high school. I worked at the window, people coming and going, all of the festivities, like that would go on, the people that commented on the beauty of the building. It was, it was very heartfelt by all of us. Wow, we had no idea you had such a gem here. I do not believe this school looks like a person. I believe it's a dream, like well-maintained and beautiful building. The grounds inside, people tell us, we understand you keep your own issues in two strings, right? It is unbelievably clean, well-maintained, painted. It's a beautiful building. While I do see many murals in other cities, some of them beautiful, I do see a lot of them, SRA, and they do not look.
I just.
This is just obviously my opinion. I'm just saying I do not think it's a good idea to put a mural on the side of the building. If there is monies out there that people would like to contribute, they are now the Sterns Junior Senior High School. It does not say that on the school. We have, have a athletic boosters, Sterns music boosters that are always raising money with people trying to get uniforms on and stuff that students. They're working very, very hard, again, on two string bridges. If there are monies that anybody has, I just really believe. Thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public? Anybody on Zoom? Seeing none? Randy, thank you very much. We look forward to finding out how you make out with the school board and let us know. Thank you. Now moves us to a special presentation from Acacia Design Works. This is the community center project. So, Patrick and Celeste, the floor is yours.
All right, I'm Celeste Card, Patrick Parker. We're in Millinocket, we have an office in Millinocket. We're up here, not quite half time, but often a little, but a third of our time. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today and Patrick says here. But then thank you for the opportunity to to look at at what a community center could be, look at down, so.
First of all, Patrick said, that's when seventy-nine came by. Trying this question. Built the town of Millinocket, first project. This one's, this one's particularly pre-project. Not only, it's not, it's not a lot of space that is done. This is an opportunity to see what something could look like. Having left Millinocket and starting to come up here. I'm actually very honored to come back. And so, we have a presentation.
Celeste there, can I just, those are really directional mics, so you got to.
You got to be straight in.
Voice them.
Look at that, you have two.
There you go.
All right, there you go. That works.
Just talk out of. If we go to the first slide. There's about nineteen. So, Millinocket, town highland. So, we live in Portland, and we, when I think of Millinocket area, it's a highland. Actually, they're really a great brand, and Millinocket is the heart of many of the heart of the city. There are roughly point ten thousand people in thirty mile range of Millinocket. So, there is support for, if the community is much greater, that point is right on. Next slide. Next slide, the, the comprehensive plan. And this, these two diagrams show public building and recreation. And as we all know, this building here is aged and, 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 attention, as as does our policy. However, we are friends with our local. This is, it's basically outline what we're trying to try and, we go through tonight. What's really what's nice is just an introduction to what problems they come up with. And first thing starts.
So, there have been a lot of existing studies. We handed these out to the counselors. I don't know if you can read them, but I'll just, essentially, what we did is we took the existing studies were given to us, and we're using that information sort of, we're gleaning the information as a starting point. I'm just going to name these six quickly. Millinocket Annual Survey from two thousand two, Tri-Town Community Survey, Kattaden Area Needs in Place, Todd and Gazetira Roadmap to the Future, Age Friendly Millinocket Action Plan, and Age in Action Twenty Twenty Two. So, this is, this becomes like the foundation of our of our formation that we're.
And particularly, the gap here, there's, there's one, the post-it book that figure out where we get out. So, we're not, we're not creating a new, a top. Initiative to use these studies. That will hold an opportunity.
Well, and there are people that have been working very hard to get these grants to enable something like this to happen. So this is. This is happening um. Through grant monies.
Yeah, there's a post. Post there initiated study on.
Oh, you can't, yeah. No need.
Next slide. I I always, I I very much enjoy going. I uh it is amazing if you haven't been there for a while. I always learn something. I always see something. Fire. Um and. At least the, you know, Millinocket was quite vibrant. Lost it. And incorporate. Um I said, I might always, I always, I wish I could go back in times. And it was part used to have a pond and it was true. I would say. You know, swimming there, but filled with glass. Um but playing the art house, having gone there as a child. And my mom talking story about us flying home up to the county. For. Good man, seeing the whole film. Click on the next picture. Photograph is classic. What is community? Community started by children. Those up through the. Back in. Block, not building. And I think like that. And and the character.
So we've, we've started to speak with different organizations that are working within the community um. Mike?
Yeah. So. And I, and not until I saw this photograph of Millinocket Shoe Hospital, Charles Shoe Hospital. I I found it fascinating. Radio and paper company. Um in the same day was amazing. It it created this town, absolutely. Detail. It would be amazing if the kids could go back.
And you're working on it.
Be there this winter.
I know.
My key to play around with original swimming pool, the pit. The classic pit of old Starz High School. This is what you need. Not, they become traditional work, play. You know, it's. Everything that goes into being. People that are working with each other, helping each other. Um I just saw there's a a local male man checking on people. They haven't picked up their mouth in a couple of days. They're still, you know, they're okay. Uh that's what I look at. I'm. You know, I'm reading the news and look at the town area coming events. It's everything from religious. Like uh organization, meaning being sufferers to recovery. That's this is community. So how do we support? That was. That's how. The manner that is intentional, not just. What have we done? Something they. At this building, they go to another building.
Right, and how do you, how do you create spaces, speaking to different people? There are spaces that are available for walking, but maybe only limited hours and then. Maybe there aren't impromptu places. For people to go where, you know, um. You know, in in the disabled community, uh you know, where they might just like to be able to be spontaneous. And so there, you know, and and the cross generational and and just across. You know, school age children. Across the sectors of of the community. How do you integrate space so you can sort of randomly run into each other? That does happen at the library and other places. Obviously, the gro- you know, the grocery store. But but there were more opportunities.
Next slide. But what do we have? Uh we have. Give a lifestyle center. A wonderful. Resource. Uh there is a fee associated with it, but you want to work out. There are people there all hours of day. Out of the car. We have the middle school gym, we have the Sterns gym. Uh we have the recreational. However, there there is limitations to have. The names and. By the community. Sterns years. So there is that.
Well, with school, school security, it can't be open up, right? So. Now we have to, we have to create other opportunities.
Next slide. Another one?
Oh, there it is. There it is.
So the Elks has been traditionally. Place to get. Have a wedding reception. I mean, I think wedding reception and possibly unions. We would want, we, a community center would not want to uh exclusively revenue of existing property. I don't think that would happen. redundancy can be good, but we also. Need space that are also due and. Have our purpose. Uh dancing is also kind of the hardest. Uh for anything, both in timber. And you. Uh Coress Gall was a great place. Also limited in scale. One, so many people legally like. For fire, fire, so. Uh the library is a bunch of areas, but. Even though they're not even. I go in there and people are. We we see healthy. If whatever, now. Both inside and around the building. And American Legion, uh it's called like. BMW is now. Um of what I. These are all spaces for people and. Where the community can meet better. Next slide. And currently with Studio One. Program. Sorry, the other day. The Royal Theatre. Um Randy's done amazing to provide this building. Bring, I I I never imagined in one year that I'm actually here. Hate to open the violin, turn it over, help downtown a lot. Thanks to Randy's happily. Either to town. Take three years, you're whatever. Remember, following next door. And I was working. The Purple Society, yeah, I recommend anyone. So church out. I spent hours. Uh and then we have Jared Vaughn. Um as a remembered bloodsucker. When I call my first stroke, after the guy left, that part. Uh it's it's a wonderful resource. Now that the trails are running. Again, it's better. We are so close to being lost in the woods. I tell people, I said, when I was back up, I'd walk on my back, I'd get lost in the woods. You don't, can't quite associate with that with what's going on.
I just heard, I just heard a concept. The Japanese call um. They they talk about forest bathing. And I was thinking, that's what we do up here when we're up here. We do forest bathing where you really immerse yourself in nature. And that's, that's so much a part of. Um the community up here. And we have five minutes left, so.
Definitely not touching that one with a ten foot pole.
I say, you have to.
Hopefully, yeah, yeah.
Yeah. Thank you very much, guys.
Events are huge. I mean, the eclipse is just, I was at the Chamber of Farmers last night, eclipse. It's just phenomenal, it's economic. I wish I would have taken a photograph of cars lined up. Down going to Dolby. And we have a a t-shirt saying, Millinocket. The cool of that also is amazing, so many. I kind of, I think it's amazing a lot. Uh the community garden and dog park and they're successful. Very, if you have a dog, you know the dog park. There is a community there, an evil there. It is a tradition for them to go out there. They take and you gossip and you talk about. And who's, who's either. It's kind of all right.
Yeah.
Ask away.
Yeah.
So who's just, you know. Give the latest thing. So what is, what has our company done in terms of? And what's on your panel? My background, I'm a backman, I was able, it was unfortunate to be able to start up Williams High School. And so it was competition. What happened was they had a middle school gym, and they had no school gym. And programmed, they had five million dollars, programmed us, uh built, so I had built into. Uh theater, arts facility with art. Music. And then they, they were doing it and a gym. They wanted to put it out on the football field. Probably I worked for a state. Let's take a gym, theater there, so they pray. Right next, right next, connected. Windstar Center, they want.
In in Fairfield. The point of that being, sometimes you start a project thinking you're gonna do one thing. And when you start looking at the space, then it becomes, you know, it's sort of like peeling an onion. It's like, oh, wait a minute, maybe it's that we do this. What's that?
It said it makes you cry.
She. Right, and we discovered that there's an existing building like just prepped it. And build a new gymnasium which. We keep this, it's helpful because there's, I'm scared we ought to change that. So we worked on all the, all the wine clients today. I have a lot of experience with wine. And then we did a recovery center down. Or the community center for. Long-term recovery. And I, when we first started the project, this is hard to find. So this is the first of all. Here for the congregation, which is how we divide. During our, it's really, we go. Really, it's unfortunate that that. And no need for probably a long-term recovery council. And it'd be. So let's go to the next. Uh. Again, uh it's a survey, um as mentioned. I'm reading, um Peter Self is some of the present. Help with the overdrive. And uh had interviewed all of them. We're made of a, very little bit of punch. We don't have that. We have the schedule space for our clients that can go to. And this place, how to go there. No. No, whenever.
Right. Let me help. Um yeah, anyway, so I think I touched on on that earlier, but we're trying to move along. Um but so this was, this was a study um. By Kyle Leathers of um. You know. Um. They interviewed students at the school. And so we we do have data about what people, you know, what students want. And we are gonna, we are gonna be having a stakeholder. Meeting where where it will be open to public. People will be able to weigh in and. Um but we we have to get it sort of a certain point before we do that. It's just not gonna be um. And so Patrick on the last page.
So again, get, get public spatial program. I've seen the spatial program put a script there. Next slide. Then once you have square footage, just then you do, then we do like. There's a block diagram or a body diagram. You have to look at whether the teacher tells them. And often guys go in often, go in often to answer. Over here, some people that we've spoken to already. But we, if there are a chance to have a walking track indoors, turning one. But we don't have, but it's not necessarily certain. Our four to six athlete at least at high school every day, waiting. If there's a building that they're going to at ten o'clock in the morning or one o'clock in the afternoon. There's a track around fifty fifty, spent on the side of the wall. Health is for me. There's just you flash around exercising. Helping. We we we've shown things like senior center. School. Center. We would like that.
Or or a children's room. You know, it's like, and none of this is, none of this is like set in stone at all. These are just, we're just.
These are just part of community centers.
Just ideas, right? And part of it will be what is able to be raised for funds in the future and all of that. But this is just, let's, let's just dream. Let's start by dreaming, right? We have a grant to dream, so we're gonna help you put that individuals.
Yeah, and this. This is then is the whole plan of my random. And then big question is. And this is something we'd like to be done. Before. We go to the next slide. Um we would do interviews, be partners, leaders, non-profit. Uh we're planning it, we're planning a top date, fine threat. Terms of. But we develop, like plan, foot plan, very elevation to follow. Then based on. Of of. Range of operation.
So and and to explain, um so this will be like a schematic design. This is just an idea and um and this is used. Fundraising. This is where the fundraising begins. Um and then. You know, if the, once the funds are are. You know, are um. Achieved, then then it goes into a whole, it would go out to probably a public bid process and then whomever is awarded the project goes full. You know, they take that as a basis, then you go through the whole design process where it gets into construction drawings and all of that. But this is really, this is just. On stuff, so.
Last slide. Basically. Fundraising. Rats and down. I will, right, I don't stay. But then um there's. There's some other idea that makes ways for. So we have a, we have a friend who's fundraiser. Who works for. What we've last. We've had a conversation, how do you create? How do you? How do you utilize? We could, we could spend a whole week talking about.
Well, we're not going to.
Wait, no, we're not, no, we're not going to. And our time is up and we're a few minutes over, but we, we did pretty good.
Between, and then the tip mechanism. Have a neighbor's attorney, so if. So grabbing for the housing. Next, uh do it. And we have resource. Funding. For all.
So certainly there's people that are working that already, so. Any.
Well, thank you for that. Uh any questions from the council? Counselors again.
I just have one. Is this something that you're proposing? Or is this something that somebody has reached out to you to do? Cause I'm, I wasn't aware.
Okay, so so we were awarded.
Nope. That's, that's the manager taking this one.
Uh. The town of Millinocket was uh awarded a grant to go through this. Um. Does uh conceptual design process for a community center. Uh about a year ago or so. Um so the.
So this is related to that?
This is that, yeah. There there was an RFP uh.
Okay.
For architects to.
I'm putting it together.
You all set?
I I'll save um my comments and stuff for later today.
Okay, anybody else from the council? Looking from the public, any comment from the public on this? Well, oh, certainly. Uh come forward, name and address, please.
Uh yes, my dates, uh. Listen in a lot. Um. I'm looking for this project. Just, I'm I'm just wondering what we're gonna get all this money. Talking about the fire station. It bought a picture of that fire station. I'll talk. Like, great, okay, great. So. Last statement. This goes along with all this. It doesn't come in like that. But we, I looked at this when I was on the council, the library, you know, yeah, keep. All right, I'm not against any of this stuff. Who's gonna pay for it? Tax pay as well, where the driving businesses off the main street now. You know, it's fine if we've got. Uh. Home state exemptions to cover our properties up, you know, where we live, but. This is a lock, it doesn't have. People have that. We absolutely sit back here and and not just tonight. I can listen to people all over Millinocket. But we're getting all this money that if I just want to spend this rate, I don't back into. Good times. Oh, we've got a lot of nice community centers around here from from the Snow Wheel Club to the Elks Lodge and, you know. I made it just fine. I'm sixty-five years old. I've had a community center in Millinocket. And I am sitting here talking to council. At five, at close. I don't want to take, yes, if you down the road, and then, and our community grows, it's not growing, still, you know, the direction.
Thank you, anyone else from the, yes, name and address, please.
Three, best thirty-two fourth Avenue, always gonna speak, but I, I gotta agree with Brian, everything he said is a lot on. We gotta remember, this is gonna cost taxpayers more money, it's a great idea, but we still have a town that's in the population, still have a town that has high taxes. I don't see that turning around yet, I hope, my hope is it will, he could, year-round job to bring young people in, to utilize these services, that we're looking at. Yes, growing up, we never had a community center, we had a couple of population plus, we kept money, I think, I'm not against it, I certainly don't want to pay for it.
Thank you, anyone else? Going back to the council, Council of Danforth.
Yep, um, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I appreciate the comments from the public. I just want to say, we're not making any decisions here, we're like future planning, this is concept design. And the idea of community center, a place, a gathering place, just, you know, that was spoken about, has been talked about for years and years and years. A lot of the work that I've done in the community, I hear that, that we need a place. So we're trying to just respond to some of those suggestions, concerns, things that we've heard. This, it, it will be years down the road, and we're not looking to commit any taxpayer funds now, there's a lot of grant money out there. But you have to start with a plan, you have to start, you know, involving the community, maybe when we do the community sessions, we're gonna hear more of what you just said, we don't need one. And maybe it's gonna end there, we don't know, but until we get out there and get more community input, we will just be sitting here doing nothing, and I'm not in that mindset, I want to do some future planning, there's a lot of that around the Gazetteer here, there's a lot of us that have been investing time in the community, thinking ahead, trying to plan, so this would get us more in a position to have a shovel-ready project, something that came from the community. So, need to hear both sides of it, but there's nothing next year, and even potentially that, you know, the two years down the road, it might be three or four, but we have to start talking about it and not just sitting on our hands, thank you.
Thank you, anyone else from the council, Council of Demay?
I guess that day is done. I will, I'll make a few comments as well, I also think that we, we need and deserve a community center for youth and for our elderly population. I do think that we have that, though, I think that we have that in spades, as you presented, we have, we have a whole bunch of options. And we also have invested highly into a, a Millinocket Library, which has rebranded itself as a community center several times, pointedly, I asked that, that question to the director, and it's back to you. We are a community center, and so I think we do have a lot of options right now, especially for the size of our community. I think that if, in the future, if, if we did look at other options, then we, we would repurpose a building, or we would repurpose maybe a, a school that already has a gymnasium, that we could consolidate our school systems, which I'm in favor of, consolidation within the founding Millinocket. So I think that we do have options already there that could make it more cost-effective, once, once our population and once our business community and stuff grows, thank you very much.
Thank you, anyone else from the council? I for one, I, I can see both sides of, of the, the coin on this one. I agree that you can come up with all kinds of money to build a facility. But how you maintain that facility and how you man it and service it is another story. Does that mean that you don't ever build the facility? No, but you can, at the time, through careful planning and that, find ways to do it and do it well without having it necessarily be a burden on the taxpayer of the town of Millinocket. I was encouraged by one thing that I saw in the manager's report, and I saw more with one thing, but I saw one thing that encouraged me in the manager's report, and that was, and it just caught my eye for just a second, this is one of the few times that I've seen recently where births outnumber deaths in the town of Millinocket. More children were born in the town of Millinocket via this manager's report than people who have passed away recently. And that type of, it, it's, it's just a, just a something, it's a swing. Does that mean that we're all sudden gonna have a baby boom and everything's gonna be fine and people are gonna move in and that? No, but it's a piece, it's a small piece of maybe just, we're starting to slowly turn the corner to start to re-get, you know, redevelop ourselves, and get the interest and get the younger people back into the community. I'll get off that, because Patrick, Celeste, thank you, yes, Randy, go right ahead, one more before we wind this up.
So, we have these funds available, and I would encourage you to go through the motions and get the survey from the town. Use all of the resources that we have through this grant, and learn for our future. If we don't build it next year or ten years from now, we'll have that information that we can utilize and look back on and look forward for our future, thank you.
Thank you. If there's nobody else, I'm gonna wind this up, thank you, Patrick and Celeste, for your presentation. Seeing nobody on Zoom that's, has their hand up or anything else, I appreciate you coming this evening. And we look forward to hearing more from you, and certainly look forward to having public meetings and public gatherings to go ahead and have this discussion more in detail. Thank you, alrighty, uh, let's go ahead and we'll move to the manager's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I submitted my manager's report, it is available in the packet and online. This report highlights current activities within each department of the town, there's a lot of great information in it, I highly recommend folks read through it thoroughly, if you have any questions on the contents of it this evening, I'm happy to answer them for you.
Anybody have any questions or comments for the manager's report? Anybody from the public? Seeing none, my only question is, how are we doing with the pool to get the water clear so that it opened and there was a little bit of a clouding problem, I guess, and they had to close it back up?
That's correct, yeah, so I checked in with, with Jody, our, the chaired rec director twice today, they were able to open and operate, from my understanding.
Excellent.
And she was keeping an eye on it, there has been some some equipment issues popping up, you know, it's an aging pool, we, we may need to consider a pump replacement in the next year or so, but you know, it all came down to we have an entirely new staff at the pool, minus one or two people. We, had they not been in need of new certifications, all of them in licenses to work on the pool and at the pool, it could have opened sooner, we wanted to open it by the twenty-fourth. By the time everybody was certified and available to work in and on the pool, the amount of time between that date and the pool opening date was like three or four days, and usually there's it's, it's a week-long process, seven to eight or nine days or so, so they were trying to trying to get through it as efficiently and speedy as possible, but it, it just wasn't enough time, so they needed a couple extra days, and, and it, it seems right now that everything's running fine, but I can't promise you you know, what, what tomorrow or next week's gonna look like, so we'll, we'll, we'll keep an eye on it and, and do everything we can.
Thank you. All right. Moving right along, Councilor McGowan, can I please get you to read Order 154, 2024, updated?
Certainly, Mr. Chairman. Order number 154 dash 2024, provided for execution of the town warrant for June twenty-seventh, 2024. It is ordered, the town warrant for June twenty-seventh, 2024, in the amount of three hundred thirty-eight thousand dollars, three hundred thirty-eight thousand, two hundred seventy-one dollars and fifty-eight cents, is hereby approved.
Second. Motion made by Councilor McGowan, second by Council of Demay, any big hitters on this one, I'm sure there must be.
Yes, there are several. Nineteen thousand two six ninety-nine to Ascend Aviation Group, that's for aviation fuel. Eight thousand one eighty-seven to Bangor Tire Company, that is new tires for Public Works Raider. Four thousand two hundred fifty dollars to Chambers Leasing Companies, that is for utility trailer for Public Works. Twenty-two thousand four oh four ninety-nine to Horrel Tanner and Associates, that's engineering services on the airport three D truck. Six thousand dollars to I Work Systems Incorporated, that is software support for the code enforcement, the permitting system. Twelve thousand four hundred seventy dollars and fifty-eight cents to Jordan Equipment Company. That was for Public Works, for a gravel screen. Ten thousand six hundred sixty-three dollars and eighty-two cents to Municipal Waste Solutions, disposal fees for the transfer site. One hundred ninety-five thousand ninety-five dollars and fifty cents to the town of East Millinocket, that's our quarterly payments on our police and recreation department contracts. Eight thousand six hundred forty-one dollars and thirty-seven cents to Uline Incorporated, that's the new ventures for the GMP partners, yeah.
Yes.
Twelve thousand.
And for across the street.
And for across the street, yeah, twelve thousand forty-four dollars and seventy cents to Versant Power Streetlights. And four thousand seven hundred twenty dollars and forty-five cents to Whitmore Public Safety Room, that's for some fire department.
Thank you, any council comment on the order? Down to the public. Back to the council, we'll do this by verbal vote, Council Higgins, how do you vote?
Aye.
Council Mackin.
Aye.
Council Pelletier.
Aye.
Council Demay.
Aye.
Council Danforth.
Aye.
Council McGowan.
Aye.
Chair Madore, aye, it's unanimous. Council McGowan, can I please get you to read Order 155 dash 2024, updated?
Order number 155, 2024, providing for execution of the wastewater warrant for June twenty-seventh, 2024. It is ordered that the wastewater warrant for June twenty-seventh, 2024, in the amount of nineteen thousand one hundred thirty-four dollars and ninety cents is hereby approved.
Second. Motion made by Council McGowan, second by Council Danforth, any big hitters in this one? I'm sorry, Council of Demay. The voices are so close.
Just two or three, three thousand five hundred forty-one dollars and twenty-nine cents to the town of Millinocket, sewer billing. Five thousand seven hundred twenty-nine dollars to Ober Associates Incorporated, that's the pub station upgrade. And five thousand one ninety-one ninety-nine to Versant Power for electricity.
Very good, any council comment on the order? Down to the public. Back to the council, all those in favor by verbal, Council Higgins?
Aye.
Council Mackin.
Aye.
Council Pelletier.
Aye.
Council Demay.
Aye.
Council Danforth.
Aye.
Council McGowan.
Aye.
Chair Madore, aye, it's unanimous. I am going to now move Order 163 dash 2024 out of order, and ask Councilor Danforth if you would please read.
Yes, happy to read, Mr. Chairman, bear with me, it's long.
Okay.
Order number 163 dash 2024, providing for adjustments to the fiscal year twenty-four municipal budget. Whereas the town manager and the town treasurer request these adjustments to be made within the fiscal year twenty-four municipal budget and preparation for year ending, year-end accounting, it is ordered that the Millinocket Town Council approves the budget adjustments listed below. Twelve thousand four hundred seventy dollars and fifty-eight cents from E zero one one five dash three seven seven eight to E zero four oh three dash two zero zero eight, Public Work Gravel Screen. Four thousand two hundred fifty dollars from E zero one one five dash three seven seven eight to E zero four oh three dash two zero zero eight, Public Work Utility Trailer for pavement roller. Five hundred, five hundred and ninety-six, five hundred dollars and ninety-six cents from E zero one one five dash three seven seven eight to E zero four oh nine dash two zero one four, transfer site security cameras dash brush pile and compost. Two hundred forty dollars from E zero one one five dash three seven seven eight to E zero four oh nine, two zero one four, transfer site security cameras, mobile backup, brush pile and compost. Nine hundred ninety-six dollars and ninety-three cents from E zero one one five dash three seven seven eight to E one zero zero two dash three one zero five, Rec Department Security Cameras, Jerry Pond. Four hundred and eighty dollars from E zero one one five dash three seven seven eight to E one zero zero two dash three one zero five, Rec Department Security Cameras, Mobile Backup, Jerry Pond. Three thousand seven hundred and eighty dollars from E zero one one five dash three seven seven eight to E one zero zero two dash three one zero five, Rec Department Replacement Docs for Jerry Pond. One thousand eighty-eight dollars from E zero one one five dash three seven seven eight to E zero one one two dash two zero one eight, postage for the clips mailing. Two thousand nine hundred ninety-four dollars from E zero two zero five dash zero four two two to E zero two zero three dash zero four one zero, Fire EMS Training.
Doing great.
Three thousand dollars from E zero two zero three dash two zero five zero to E zero two oh, two zero four dash two zero five one, Fire EMS Equipment. Now on to unassigned, unbalanced transfers. Seven thousand five hundred and seventy-six dollars and sixteen cents from UFB to E zero two zero nine dash four zero four two zero two, Fleet Insurance Coverage, one thousand five hundred and thirty-five dollars from UFB to E zero two zero nine dash four two zero eight, Public Officials Insurance. Seven thousand thirty-six dollars from UFB to E zero two zero nine dash four two zero nine, Employment Practices Insurance. Eight thousand five hundred ninety-eight dollars and thirty-nine cents from UFB to E zero one one two dash one 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 two, Computer Support slash our mid-year contract renewal. Eight hundred sixty-two dollars and eighty-four cents from UFB to E zero one one two dash two zero two zero five seven, Computer Network and Licensing. Four hundred and fifty dollars and eighty cents from UFB to E zero one zero four dash two zero three zero, Leadership Training Institute Travel Clerk, Travel for the Clerk, eighty-one dollars and ninety-four cents from UFB to E zero one one eight dash two zero three five, Leadership Training Institute Training slash Travel for CID.
Madam Clerk, which one did we miss?
The updated order for the computer support was ten thousand six hundred seventy-six dollars and forty-nine cents.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I apologize.
Nope, any second on the order? Second, what order, motion made by Council Danforth, second by Council McGowan, any council discussion on the order? Seeing none, down to the public? On Zoom? All those in favor, Council Higgins?
Aye.
Council Mackin.
Aye.
Council Pelletier.
Aye.
Council Demay.
Aye.
Council Danforth?
Aye.
Council McGowan. Chair Madore, aye, it's unanimous. Council Pelletier, can I please get you to read Order 156 dash 2024?
Yes, thank you. Order 166, 2024, writing for approval of the application for Victor's license for Luke Hughes Place, MFT. It is ordered that he attachment, application for Victor's license, hereby for Lynn Quinn, Brooksville, Maine. Doing business as Luke Hughes Place, MFT, Bandstand Veteran Memorial Park, Trails and Festival, Millinocket.
Motion made by Council Pelletier, second by Council Demay, any council discussion on the order? Down to the public. Back to the council, verbally, Council Higgins?
Aye.
Council Mackin.
Aye.
Counsel Pelletier.
Aye.
Counsel Dumeay.
Aye.
Counsel Danforth.
Aye.
Counsel McGowan.
Aye.
Chair Madore, aye, it's unanimous. Counsel Macken, can I please get you to read order one fifty-seven dash twenty twenty-four?
Order number one fifty-seven dash twenty twenty-four, providing for approval of an application for a particular license for this the little piggy, MFT. It is ordered that the attached application for a Victoria, Victor. Biggest license is hereby approved for Zach La Pierre, through remain doing business as this little piggy. MFT Bandstand Veterans Memorial Park Trails and Festival.
Second. Motion made by Counsel Macken, second by Counsel Dumeay. Any council discussion on the order?
When I first read it.
Seeing none down to the public? Back to the council.
Isn't that the best name for a mobile food cart that hold pork and barbecue?
That is definitely none of them.
Sir Dumeay thinks about the mobile food truck.
I thought it was gonna be a little misspelling, but that's what I read at first. Of all four.
Far from the market.
All right, uh, let's go with uh, a oral uh vote. Counsel Higgins, how do you vote?
Aye.
Counsel Macken.
Aye.
Counsel Pelletier.
Aye.
Counsel Dumeay.
Enthusiastically aye.
Counsel Danforth.
Aye.
Counsel McGowan.
Aye.
And Chair Madore, aye, it's unanimous. Yeah. All right, Counsel Dumeay, can I please get you to read order one fifty-eight dash twenty twenty-four?
Absolutely, Mr. Chairman. Order number one fifty-eight dash twenty twenty-four, providing for approval of an application for entertainment license for Hillcrest Golf Club. It is ordered that the attached application for the entertainment license hereby approved for Patricia St. John, Secretary Hillcrest Golf Club, business address one golf course road. Doing business as Hillcrest Golf Club, one golf course road.
Second.
Second.
Okay, so motion made by Counselor Hit, uh, Dumeay, second by Counsel Danforth. Uh, any council discussion on the order? Seeing none down to the public? Back to the council, uh, Counsel Higgins, how do you vote?
Aye.
Counsel Macken.
Aye.
Counsel Pelletier.
Aye.
Counsel Dumeay.
Aye.
Counsel Danforth.
Aye.
Counsel McGowan.
Aye.
Chair Madore's aye, it's unanimous.
You're gonna give me an identity conflict.
I know, I'm sorry. Work it out in therapy. Uh. Counsel Danforth, can I please get you to read order one fifty-nine dash twenty twenty-four?
Yes, order number one fifty-nine dash twenty twenty-four, providing for approval for an application for a malt, finest and spirituous liquor license for Hill Crest, for Hill Crest Golf Club. It is ordered that the Millinocket Town Council approves the attached application for a malt, finest and spirituous liquor license is hereby approved for Hillcrest Golf Course, business address one golf course road, Millinocket, doing business as Hill Crest, Hill Crest Golf Club, one golf course road, Millinocket.
Second.
Motion made by Counsel Danforth, second by Counsel McGowan. Uh, any council discussion on the order? Seeing none down to the public? Back to the council, Counsel Higgins?
Aye.
Counsel Macken.
Aye.
Counsel Pelletier.
Aye.
Counsel Dumeay.
Aye.
Counsel Danforth.
Aye.
Counsel McGowan.
Aye.
And Chair Madore, aye, it's unanimous. Counsel McGowan, can I please get you to read order one sixty dash twenty twenty-four?
Yes, order number one sixty dash twenty twenty-four, providing for authorization for real estate tax write-off. It is ordered that the Millinocket Town Council authorizes the tax collector and or trader to write off tax exempt real estate property taxes totaling four hundred thirty-two dollars and seventy-eight cents as of June twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-four, the following location. Town of Millinocket, outer central street, R zero five dash zero one one, twenty twenty-four, four hundred thirty-two dollars seventy-eight cents. Note, the tax collector's request to write off personal property taxes is the result of the twenty twenty-four sale of property to the Town of Millinocket. Second.
Motion made by Counsel McGowan, second by Counselor Danforth. Uh, any council discussion on this order? Counsel Dumeay.
Um, it might, it might try to experience this tax like there, we don't. I don't recall this being an actual thing that we used to do very often. I, I remember us doing it for personal property taxes after the time lapse. It, we, we deemed uncollective. So, I guess I would. I already talked to the manager and I understand the reasoning behind this, but I don't know if the public is aware, so. Could you or somebody else explain this to the public?
I would, just a manager, would you be so kind?
Yeah. Uh, so. When this purchase was going through, um, it was originally scheduled to be closed um, in early to mid-March, uh, so that was before April one, when the taxes are uh deemed. So, what happened was it was rescheduled several times, uh, the closing actually took place first week of July, that same year, so on April first, the Elks technically owned it. Um, and then uh come July, the town of Millinocket owned it. Um, and that happened between the time where taxes were committed and tax bills were sent out. So it, it, it really just is an anomaly in the timing of, of how those events were scheduled. So. You know, we're, we don't, the town doesn't pay taxes on its own property uh that we own, so, so we'll be uh just requesting to write off this four hundred bucks.
Thank you. Any other council comment on the order? Down to the public? Yes.
Yeah, I, I just, I guess Brian.
Thank you.
Mr. Davis, can you just turn that light on? That button on the box.
Yeah, perfect.
Perfect.
Right, hey, this taxpayer. Um, I just didn't understand, I guess what the manager said is, this tax approved, approved from the time that we purchased it, the time of this that's a purchase, I mean, so. Closest, does the Yeltsol this tax? Is it a taxpayer who was, wasn't flying like?
Well, I suppose you could swing it that way if, if you wanted to.
I know, swing it.
Well, so. So, the. Yeah, so we were supposed to close on that property in March. Taxes are based off the date of April first and the closing was postponed until July, so. In the grand scheme of things, they, they should not or would not have owned it on April first because we were trying to make the closing of the property happen, so. You know, yes, technically they owned that property um on April first.
We, I guess what we're going with this, we're gonna town set a precedent, so we're gonna forgive everybody that, that doesn't close on the no taxes, I mean, I, I sold property and doesn't always work out, maybe, and somebody's gonna pay the taxes, but nobody's ever given my taxes, you have to pay. And, and I, I don't even, I'm not even gonna ask whose fault, was it God doing it, our fault? House's fault, was it both people's fault, but, you know. If we didn't have to forgive the taxes. I, I don't know, I, I was another council, that wasn't happening. No taxes. What we do here, we must pay, pay taxes.
It's true, uh, but, but the town doesn't pay taxes on its own property.
Did you think we owned? Yeah, we don't owe any taxes, but if they owe, they owe.
You're absolutely right. Now you've used an example of you've sold property, did you sell it to a taxpaying entity or did you sell it to a non-taxpaying entity?
Well, I, I, I don't think that makes.
Private sale, it goes to you.
Those taxes, they have to pay, you have to, guys, if they owe taxes, they must be taxpaying. They're exempt, I guess, and did we move the property at the time that the, the taxes kept going, or did the Yeltsol own it? Did we sign off on it? Yeltsol did, they owe taxes. Technically.
Technically.
Yep, I can see what you're saying.
You are correct. Technically, they own it on April first.
Unless we're gonna give in the decision for giving people's taxes, because we, we, they overran the, the date of the closing. Man, I couldn't even move my local home to Kelly's till I had the taxes paid, moving on full of our, just the way I like. Couldn't move that, I could not move my property. Till I gave my, my taxes, they were, but they, I had to go to the reality and make sure they were.
Sure. You, you make a point, but we are comparing apples to oranges at this point.
May I make a deputy tax collector's point?
Certainly.
Um, speaking with um the selling um agent, there was not an agreement for the seller within the purchase price of the property, any um past wastewater billing was any or, or taxes, so then those taxes would go to on the onus of Town of Millinock, a tax exempt status.
That make more sense? Yeah. You, you should, should always go to the, the, the head of line first. Thank you. Anyone else from the public? Seeing none? Okay, all those in favor, Counsel Higgins, uh, on order one sixty dash twenty twenty-four?
Aye.
Counsel Macken.
Aye.
Counsel Pelletier.
Aye.
Counsel Dumeay.
I'm gonna abstain, I'm, I'm still unclear, that just confused it for me, to be honest.
Okay. Uh, Counsel Danforth.
Aye.
Counsel McGowan.
Aye.
Chair Madore, aye, so six zero one. All right. Counsel Higgins, do you have order one sixty-one dash twenty twenty-four?
Yes, I do.
Would you please read it?
Order one sixty-one, twenty twenty-four, providing for street and parking lot closures for twenty twenty-four, Fourth of July celebrations. Whereas the town events team and the public health and safety officer have submitted the attached request for the street and parking lot closures for the Fourth of July activities. It is ordered that the Millinocket Town Council approves the following closures, Penobscot Avenue, Central Street to Cataden Avenue, including all side streets from six AM to twelve PM for the Fourth of July parade. Bandstand Parking Lot from six AM Thursday, July fourth through ten PM Saturday, July sixth for activities in Veterans Park. Poplar Street, Penobscot Avenue to Cataden Avenue, from six AM Thursday, July fourth through ten PM Saturday, July sixth, for activities in Veterans Park.
Second.
Okay, thank you. Uh, motion made by Counsel Higgins, second by Counsel McGowan. Any council discussion on the order? Down to the public. Back to the council, let's go council vote. Counsel Higgins, how do you vote?
Aye.
Counsel Macken.
Aye.
Counsel Pelletier.
Aye.
Counsel Dumeay.
Aye.
Counsel Danforth.
Aye.
Counsel McGowan.
Aye.
Chair Madore's aye, it's unanimous. Counsel Pelletier, can I please get you to read order one sixty-two dash twenty twenty-four?
Certainly. Providing for approval of support letter for KWW access via Millinocket. Whereas the Millinocket Town Council has been asked to submit a letter, a letter of support for S uh, four two zero nine. A bill to provide greater regional access to the Cataden Woods and Waters National Monument in the state of Maine and whereas a previous request for support was entertained and letter submitted contingent, uh, on continued snowmobile and ATV access trail connection purposes, advocating for Millinocket local snowmobile and ATV community. And whereas this concern has been resolved with the result of a permanent easement purchase and granted to the snowmobile and ATV community, solidifying trail access and further connection. It is ordered that the Millinocket Town Council approve the attached letter of support reverencing economic support for local business community and potential future investments within Millinocket.
Second.
Motion made by Counsel Pelletier, second by Counsel Danforth. Council discussion on the order? Counsel Dumeay.
I'm gonna reserve my uh, my opportunity to speak on this after public comment.
Okay. Anyone else from the council want to talk, want to speak on this order?
Chairman, you, you talked about, reached out to the attendant Molly on the screen, can you just verify that they changed so that their first and last name is?
Yes, Molly, uh, if you would please, could we have much like the same situation we have with people here in the audience, we have to have first and last name uh to identify, please? I'm gonna go to Counsel Higgins now. Counsel Higgins?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I'd like to speak after we come back from public.
Certainly. Go right ahead, Counselor.
After.
After?
I'll look your book.
Okay.
Molly, we need to be remembered if she doesn't.
Molly, yeah, Molly, if you, if you don't put your last name in, uh, you're gonna have to be removed. I'm sorry. But we need first and last name when you come in on uh, on the internet. I'm getting nothing, so. Thank you, Mr. Manager. All right, so seeing no more uh comments from the council, I'll go down to the public. Anyone from the public wish to uh speak on order one sixty-two dash twenty twenty-four? Yes, certainly.
Not as town clerk, but um as a, as a chair of the and uh.
May I have this?
Chair of the commission, the road association for Stacyville, finally.
Thank you.
Uh, as a camp owner, um that road is used uh often enough by camp owners, um, and as, as by the funding association and the camp owners' money together, um, our concern is maintenance, assistance with the um traffic that would pertains to the, the road, also on access, access to the hands for the metal clothes, whether it's by as we can be in power of those project, so the maintenance and the access, we want to be sure that there's access twenty-four months.
Twelve months out of the year.
What, twenty, yes, twelve months out of the year, I'm sorry.
That's, that's fine.
Both sides.
Yeah.
Twenty, twenty hours.
Twenty-four hours a day, twelve months out of the year, yeah, okay, thank you. Anyone else from the public want to speak on this order? Yes, please. Name and address. Did we die?
Okay.
Uh, nope, we gotta have the green light on.
Just leave it on.
Just leave it on.
Yeah. There we are. We'll leave it right on.
Thank you, Steve, Steve Land, resident of Millinocket, sixty-first street. Uh, also a taxpayer of Town of Millinocket, a taxpayer of the state of Maine, a property that I have near Millinocket Lake. I'm a camp, uh, camp owner. Backside of Millinocket Lake, basic road explicitly to access the project there. I had a chance to review Senator King's post-bill uh very thorough. And who also was being a pro business, I am pro business. One of the things that I see lacking is access for camp owners, they the basic road, access to the camps. There is quite a few properties on the plate, years in hand, on the market plate, a lot. I had a little bit of a chance to watch Caton Woods and Waters available air roads, uh, to access on the fourth end. It was very related. It was very related. It's kind of a personal if we Stacyville Road. Ask second.
Right.
So I think there's a lot of concerns. I know other people that couldn't make the meeting tonight uh, have concerns for access. What I what I'd like to see, I'd like to see the council table this letter of support tonight and discuss the other interests of taxpayers that use that section of that road to access it, to access their cottages. Like I said, I've reached out to Senator King's office via email. I have not got a response. So at 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 this point in time, I I think it would be a a good idea to maybe table this and say, hey, how are we going to? How are we gonna allow those camp owners access and what's gonna be the criteria as far as what seasons? Uh, is it gonna be year round or? There's just too many details lacking for access. There's been a tremendous amount of work here done for snowmobile ATV. This has been in the works for a long, long time, and I commend you, the the town, everybody that worked on this. Like I said, there is one thing that's really lacking and 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 that's gonna be access. I don't have the answers for that. I don't know if anybody has any answers for that, and I don't know if anybody has thought about that at all. But there's a there's a lot of properties that use that Stacyville Road for access. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public? Yes.
Ryan Davis, taxpayer of Millenocket. Um, I'm just wondering, everybody else that wants to access or use that road, snowmobile club, uh, four-wheel club and and whatnot, all have uh, uh, secure an easement. Doesn't the federal government do the same? Set outright, own a road that we're gonna have to deal with changes of of min- administration every four years and what goes on this year might be different next year and or the year after. There's no security in us not having that the way it is right now. And I know everything's gonna change over time, but uh, no, I know they secure an easement. Everybody else had to secure an easement on that Stacyville Road and just even across. Uh, uh, now where uh, camp owners are, you know, wearing a bunch, are they gonna be able to get to their camp? You know, this was, I remember sitting right up there and 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 the park opponent standing over here saying, this is it's not gonna grow anymore. We're already talking about growing it right now. It just, it's not gonna stop. Arcadia doesn't stop. It's just, we need to I don't know, step up and say, you know, we need to have what we got now and keep it, keep it the way it is. I I'm pro-business. I I have a business. But I'm afraid of, I'm afraid of the future of of us losing more and more of our rights. And this is just one more of them that end up the federal government stepping in and and telling camp row. Who knows? Camp owners ain't gonna be able to use that road till June or whatever.
My only response to that would be more in the form of a question. If it was an easement rather than a federal road that was put in there, would the federal government still be responsible for taking care and keeping it updated and?
Well, that's that was my question. Perfect example of the of the Whitestone Bridge. I think the federal government replanked that a couple of years ago. They just got an easement. All they have is an easement by coming in that way there, and they replanked it. And there was a big controversy that the the people who actually owned the bridge didn't even give them permission. But because of the easement, they had actually had a right to do that.
Right.
So my answer back to you, it sounds like they've already done it.
Okay.
On an easement they already have. So, you know, I'm not against them maintaining a road, but ownership is a whole different ballgame.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
May I ask Mr. Davis a question?
Certainly.
Mr. Davis, can I ask you a question? As a business owner, and this goes to any of the business owners here in uh, Millenocket. How would this affect your business or how has in the last eight years um, entrances either hampered or helped your business?
I can tell you that the federal government wants me to buy a a pass or purchase uh, a pass to get in the net, in the monument. So it's it's actually affected me monetary. Now, and to be honest, everybody's listening here. I don't, I don't, very seldom get a call to go in there. But I do go other places, but by law, I'm not supposed to go in there unless I have a pass.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public? This is your time, Jim.
Can you all hear me?
Oh, hold on one second, Jim. What do we have here? Yes, go right ahead.
Hi, um, Betsy Cook here. I I'm the main state director for Trust for Public Land and Trust for Public Land purchased the thirty one thousand three hundred and sixty seven acres that um, contain a portion of the proposed access into Cataden Woods and Waters National Monument, and we are working with Acadian Timber um, on the Stacyville Road and the subsequent portion that um, could provide southern access into the monument. So I just wanted to clarify a couple of the factual items here um, that I've heard really, really good questions come up around access and maintenance and easements. So first and foremost, this federal bill and the bill that the select board is being asked to support, it would authorize the National Park Service to acquire the roads or rights on the roads, so an easement essentially, um, but it does not automatically do that. So if the bill were to pass, it would authorize the Park Service to enter into negotiations with the private landowners like Trust for Public Land and Acadian Timber to either acquire the roads or an easement on the road. So that's absolutely um, a possibility. My understanding is the portion of Stacyville Road would likely be a access, public access easement that the National Park Service held, and they wouldn't own the road outright. So um, to the, to the last comment there. As far as access rights into camp lots, all of the existing access rights that exist on these roads would stay in place. Um, they would not, any of those legal access rights would not be affected by the Park Service acquiring a access easement or acquiring the roads. And then the third piece about maintenance and management, really great point as well. So that would be negotiated when the Park Service acquires the roads or the access rights. And um, very much it is Trust for Public Land's intention as one of the landowners that would be uh, selling the road or access rights to ensure that the Park Service is obligated to help maintain the roads in coordination with all of the other users, including um, logging and and uh, and abutting landowners that use the property for um, timber harvest and for camp lot owners. So I just wanted to clarify a little bit of that and also provide assurance that um, any existing access rights that are currently in place for folks to go into their camp lots uh, would not change.
Thank you. Thank you for that clarification. Um, I think that answers a lot of questions that were asked earlier. Um, now, Mr. Bis, if you
Uh, Jimmy, Jimmy Bis, thirty two Forest Avenue. I've been involved with this issue for a long time, going back to nineteen ninety two. Um, I certainly don't trust the federal government, so that's why I'm here tonight. It's clear that this issue will never go away. Said that real long. A little overview. The monument should never have happened right from the very beginning. The monument was done as a favor from Rossane Quimby by President Obama. She got herself appointed to the National Park Service Board.
Jim, can we?
Go to the
We, I really need to focus on, yeah, I understand, but I really need to focus on this.
Uh, there's been many, what I call, lies right from the very beginning of this. Uh, we were told that the uh, the monument would not expand, and here we are, we're faced with another expansion. Um, we were told that would create a thousand jobs, well, plus, and that has not happened. That's back, I believe it will cost us jobs in the future. Now we're set faced with expansion of the Stacyville Road. In King's letter, he states, as it was said here, that forestry jobs would be protected. Uh, snowmobile use, we just heard, hunting, traditional hunting would be protected, access would be protected. The problem with these people who are pushing this went to Washington DC about this past one, the one before. Many board of the Caton Chamber Commerce, or the Quimby Chamber Commerce, I prefer to call them. And tried to urge them to make the monument a national park. Once that happens, everything is off the table, everything changes. You don't have snowmobile national parks. Yellowstone, as we know, is very limited. There is no hunting, there is no forestry, there's no forest management, and access is clearly restricted. Do we really want this for our future? The bottom line is, I believe that this is just a cancer. This is a seed, a cancer for the future. And the goal of these people is to make Northwood, this is part of the big picture. People gotta, you gotta realize, we're gonna look at the big picture here. They're piecing this together, they're furthering this piece by piece. And this is part of the restore plan that I was involved in in ninety two. And this monument is a seed for that cancer. This is their agenda, their restore agenda. We're asking you to simply state, take a position, make it for our future, not if it isn't for our future, your future. This is for our kids and our grandchildren. That's what I'm fighting for. That's why we have to start this now. We have to send a message to DC. We don't want any more federal land in our backyard. This is for our kids and our grandkids. This is what I'm here for. It's not for me anymore. I'm at the age now, I've enjoyed, we've all enjoyed the Stacy Road. How many people have enjoyed the Stacy Road? I mean, we grew up on the Stacy Road. Now I could be part of the National Park Service. Now scary for the future. And I'll tell you, if the people pushing this told the truth, we wouldn't be here right now. We, their, the whole agenda would collapse if they actually told the truth what their real agenda is all about. And that I truly believe. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public? Uh, yes, I saw hands go up all over. Uh, yeah, go Celeste first and then we'll go.
Celeste Bard, um, property owner, twenty six Balsam Drive, uh, Millenocket, um. I don't know what to say except that there are billionaires that create private kingdoms. And um, I think things have changed and you know, I think there is a certain benefit to public use and maybe it's not the way it was and hopefully um, I don't know, we all have to adapt to change, but uh, but I think to Mr. Bis's point, um, we're trying to preserve use for the public and future generations. And so I guess the question is how? The question is how? And I would like to just point out that, that um, if any of these large tracts of land become kingdom properties where people can fly in from Texas or other countries and just not even have to come into Millenocket, we kind of all lose. And so I I I would just like to sort of pose the question of of whether there is still some benefit to to some of these changes, even though it hasn't maybe been the way it was used when the paper company owned these large tracts of land and, you know, a lot of people grew up to these wonderful lives. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you.
Gail Fanjoy, fifty four Rhode Island Avenue. I'm here tonight speaking on behalf of the Friends of Cataden Woods and Waters. I'm on the Board of Directors. I would like to clarify some statements that Mr. Bis made um, in terms of a trip to Washington. The Chamber Commerce had nothing to do with it. So I I really hope you folks can deal um, in the facts and not the paranoia and emotion of people who are not willing to accept change and progress. I mean, the bottom line is Millenocket is a gateway community without a gateway. This is a road. This is a corridor. It is not um, a road that is not going to be used for logging. It is going to be used for logging. And it's also going to invite the public up the road. It's hard sometimes for us to realize, because we've used these roads for decades, a hundred years. We are the public. Even the locals are the public. If we want certain access, certain access carved in legislation to those precious lands, our camps, our waters. We should be behind this legislation. That is what is going to guarantee it. This legislation. Everybody worried about access. Here it is. This is the answer. I really don't understand why somebody would oppose this who is concerned about access. Because this is it. This is your answer. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public want to speak? Uh, Counselor Higgins, oh, excuse me.
I, can I, can I just, I just wanted to, uh, my name is Brian Henrichs. I'm with Friends of Cataden Woods and Waters as well.
Thank you.
Uh, there, there was two uh, factual statements before that I wanted to comment on. Um, the gentleman who was commenting on needing to pay to access a Cataden Woods and Waters National Monument. There are no fees to enter and recreate in the monument as an individual. He may have been referring to commercial use, um, but I just want to clarify for the recreating public that there are no fees to enter Cataden Woods and Waters National Monument. And uh, the second comment was about National Park designation impacting um, traditional uses. The monument currently is structured such that lands east of the east branch of the Penobscot River are a recreation area that could have a different designation that preserves those traditional recreation practices um, as opposed to designation for lands on the west side of the east branch. So, and I further echo the comments that have been shared about the economic uh, benefits and the public access that this legislation would ensure. Uh, thank you for considering.
Thank you. May I ask you a question? The the gentleman that spoke is a, is a m- main guide. Uh, if he were to take somebody into the park to guide for them, he needs to then pay a fee, does he not?
Correct. That is commercial use. That would be a commercial use authorization.
Okay, I just want to get that clarified. I understand that the general public coming in does not get charged for that. Thank you very much. I appreciate your, your, your comments.
Thank you.
Yes.
Randy Jackson, ninety five Knox Street. Um, I think that as far as access being guaranteed, fine. And I think that uh, having more partners to help maintain that um, access road would be a great benefit for the people who have camps on Stacyville Road or use that for access. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public? Uh, going back to the council, Counselor Danforth?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm wondering um, if it would be okay if I could ask Gail Fanjoy back to the podium in a different role?
Would you mind, Ms. Fanjoy? Thank you.
I know when you spoke prior, you spoke as a board member of um, Catan Woods and Waters, but what about from the chamber, from the business aspect? Um, do you have some feedback or some comments? I know um, economically and from businesses here, what you can share, what you know, uh, feelings, concerns from business owners that you
Certainly, I, I, I um, I did have an occasion a few weeks ago to speak to um, to Angel from the Sawmill Bar and Grill and you know, just were, was receiving her thoughts about this bill. And um, she said they were, they were thrilled. I mean, I said, you're the big winner here, right at the mouth of this road. Um, as other businesses in Millenocket, we anecdotally, uh, I don't have hard data for you, but anecdotally, we know that the businesses to the north in our region have really benefited because of direct access to the monument. Um, Pat- the Patton area and Shin Pond and Mount Chase in that area, Madagaman. Um, so but all of the amenities, a lot of the amenities are right down here in Millenocket. So lodging, um, restaurants and and this, and the like. And so when we think about the access, sometimes the access, sometimes, and, and for a long time, I envisioned just traveling to the monument on that road. So that to me is what access meant. But it also means that people in the monument are going to travel from the monument to Millinocket. And those businesses in Millinocket will definitely benefit. And beyond, up, up toward the lakes, Baxter State Park and beyond. And so when you think about how, how long it takes and how kind of frozen out of the economic, the economics of the monument, we are, because of the distance, this remedies that. So speaking, um, from an economic development perspective, this is a really, really good thing uh, for, for the community of Millinocket specifically.
Yeah, yeah, thank you, I appreciate that, because I, we did get, um, through email, the Katadon Woods and Waters, they've had their statement and, um, some, um, letters or comments of support. And I know from some of them were from Golden Road Crossing and from Matt Paulson, you know, further up. I just wondered here locally, what, what the sense was with the feeling or what you were thinking.
Right, I mean, you know, the, the, uh, a couple of years ago, we got a numbers of statements from, um, uh, businesses in Millinocket KG, for example, again, another big winner, somebody right on that road, um, the hotels, uh, the, the restaurants that, that were really very pleased about it. And this entrance now and exit is directly in the town of Millinocket. For two years ago, it was on Route eleven. Um, so this is, this puts us even closer to reaping the benefits of visitors.
Thank you, also. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Uh, again, anyone else want to comment?
Certainly.
Yep. Also, I think all was.
Gene Garrawitz, one sixty-four Main Avenue, Millinocket. One of the things I just think the town needs to look into, I know when, um, the monument opened the access up north, I know Patton, Shin Pond, they had up there public safety, their fire and EMS paid service because of how many vehicles they say they anticipate coming through. And that's something I think the town needs to look at here is what is that going to cost us extra also to have to put on more manpower to guarantee that?
A good question, so.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Counselor Higgins, did you have a letter that you wanted to read?
Um, no, I want, I had a comment that I want, I wanted to talk to after the public comments.
Okay. Um, I know Counselor Danforth has a letter that she wants to enter in, the, the council's been asked to enter into the minutes, so if you would go ahead?
So this, um, the whole council got this letter from a constituent, um, and so I'm chosen to read it. So it says, good morning, I'm writing as it, so this is from Mike, um, Scrock, uh, Millinocket resident. Good morning, I'm writing as a concerned citizen of Millinocket Maine, I'd like to voice my concerns for the addition of the roads mentioned in Bill S. Four two zero nine to Katadon Woods and Waterway. I was under the impression that access to the Katadon Woods and Water, and Waterway National Monument presently exist. The continued efforts to restrict, detour, and prohibit the use of said lands that have been used by generations of Maine residents and visitors is, is hidden in the details with language such as easements for ATVs and snowmobiles only, or road closed for improvement. I was under the impression that access to the Katadon Woods and Waterway National Monument presently exist. It is also clear that the Katadon Woods and Waterway along the Wabanaki Tribal Group, along with the Wabnak, Wabnak, Wabnaki Tribal Group of Maine would enjoy a continued expanse of their footprint up to and including Baxter State Park, the real monument of Maine. If you connect the dots on a map, the future for all of the people of Maine looks grim. Personally, all are welcome on these roads and the destinations in their grandchildren's dreams. Looking ahead, those dreams will soon become a myth, or simply grandfathers telling those stories again. I was under the impression that access to the Katadon Woods and Waterway National Monument presently exist, Millinocket resident, Michael Spur.
Thank you. Anyone else? I would just say, just from my own personal, that I and Counselor Davis and Counselor Bis, former counselors, know this. I was opposed to the National Monument early on in my council career. Uh, but in saying that, the count, the monument is here. It is a fact, it's a fixture, it's not going anywhere and it's not going away. Whether or not we worry or we discuss, uh, whether or not more expansion is going to happen to the actual land itself isn't part of this discussion. This discussion is about an access road from Millinocket to the Katadon Woods and Waters National Monument. I believe that for the business community within the town of Millinocket and the surrounding area, I think an access road was needed, it was one of the things that I discussed at great length early on in discussions with, uh, before the monument was, could there be a road for this? I see, I see benefits, I honestly do. Uh, I see people traveling during the day or coming up for a weekend, taking a ride to Baxter State Park, coming back down and then being able to use the same road to be able to go into the monument. In the meantime, those people stay overnight, they eat at the restaurants, they stay at the lodgings, they buy things. Uh, so where, I know there will always be a great divide within our community over the monument. But, and if there were an opportunity somewhere down the road for some kind of big land acquisition to add to the monument, I certainly would not be in favor of it. But this is a road. And it is taking, my understanding, about a two hundred foot wide easement on the existing road, including the shoulders, and taking that through and taking it to the monument and back. So as long as the camp owners could get access year round, which I think is a very legitimate concern, as long as people who are using it and have used it for hunting, uh, for, as it said in the letter, going ahead and picking fiddleheads. Uh, it can be used and enjoyed still, I have no problem with it. I think that you can either continue to poke at the windmill that is the monument, or you can go ahead and embrace the road as a, as a tool to help the community of Millinocket out. And that's the way I'm approaching this. Um, it's just one person, one counselor, one vote. But I think that I'm sticking to the letter of what the order is and what the proposal is. And I'll leave it at that. Um, anyone else? Seeing none? Oh, we do, absolutely, Counselor Higgins?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair, um, as an elected official, but I, the constituents of the town, um, I'm going to say I'm going to have to vote no on this one. Represent the citizens in the town of Millinocket that oppose this order, just so their voice is heard.
Certainly, go right ahead.
If he's telling you or not.
Okay, Counselor DeBain.
Thank you, I'm sorry, this may be a little lengthy, but I will speak to the order.
Okay.
I've been thinking about this a lot. Um, this has been on my mind for, since I've seen this bill come out. Because I've, I've been involved with it since my last term as well. And I don't know anybody other than myself that has been going on to this more open-minded and I've caught a lot of flack for not taking a position on, on anything that was discussed, so I went into it skeptical because I, I have a, I have a distrust of the federal government, no matter who's in charge, because I think we all should. Uh, we should question our government. So when it comes to this bill, S four two zero nine, I think back on my experiences because the community is very divided. We're talking about an access road that's not within the town of Millinocket. It may or may not affect the town of Millinocket and the businesses and the citizens, but it is not within the town of Millinocket. Um, camp owners may be residents of Millinocket, but once again, they're not. Those properties are outside of the purview of a council decision down in Millinocket. So in this bill, and, and you have the paper version, I wish I had it, because I can't read off my phone very well.
Would you like to borrow it, why don't you give it back?
Please. Is it a signed copy?
Sorry.
That's a little pretty extended. All right, I'm just going to go by his ass.
Okay.
Um, the bill would authorize new access points pointing to what, um, pointing to what Bexy Cook said, um, authorize new access points to Katadon Woods and Waters by giving the National Service permission to acquired land with willing donors and sellers, either in fees or as an easement. Better connect the monument to the town of Millinocket and major roadways. Third point, um, that's noted in this is allow NPS, National Park Service, to acquire property for monument administration and visitor services outside of the park boundaries. So, when I went to West Virginia with the delegation that Elliot's Field Transportation sponsored, that's how open-minded I was, um, because I wanted to learn for myself. It was to, to gear up these communities to become a destination, not a gateway anymore. So I have to think of Millinocket as a destination, not a gateway to anything, because gateway means you're passing through it. We, we don't necessarily just want people to pass through us anymore, because we do that for four seasons with recreation, with snowmobiling, with, with all these things that we offer for people to pass through and go to Baxter, go here and go there. I myself have visited Katadon Woods and Waters Monument three times. Um, taking my family up there, I myself, I've done my due diligence. I've exited the Stacyville Road once, uh, without any permission, without anybody owning it, outside of the people that currently own it. Um, I'm from the public, so I don't know why there's not public access already. Um, when I look at other communities that do have access, like through the Grindstone Road, I don't see the promise that was given, I sat in meetings with Angus King, with Senator King, with Director Jarvis when he was there. Meetings that you, sir, attended.
Yes.
Meetings that fellow colleagues attended. And the big thing was where was the plan, where's the plan, where's the plan, and you guys demanded the plan without the plan, and we just kind of accepted what was given to us. And that's fine, because you're right, bills such as these, in my experience, are already done deal. They're now just looking for us to CYA it, they're looking for support after the fact. Why is that? I ask myself why all the time when it comes to these decisions, when it comes to the federal and state government? Why do they do what they do and then ask us to support what they do? I think there's a reason. So, getting back to the order, I don't think it, A, as a elected official of Millinocket is on my radar to accept an access that is outside of the town of Millinocket. I struggle with that because I sat in meetings in the very beginning with National Resource Council Maine in my living room, with Lucas St. Clair in my living room. And then I talked to people over here and I tried to gather on this side and on this side and, and sometimes you just need a gut check of, you look at what's around you and who already does have access. And has this been exaggerated? Or are we sold a bill of goods? I feel that way, as a citizen of Millinocket, I feel that way. Because we accepted, much like what you just said, you were accepted and it's here, it's, it is what it is. So now where's the benefit? What is it, seven, eight, nine years later, and where is the benefit? Or are we just hoping and dreaming, like what you said? Acadia, when it came, I did my research, when Acadia was built, the town of Bar Harbor didn't really, or, or the surrounding communities didn't really flourish for another fifty or sixty years after that.
Right.
So we're really talking about, not about us, like this gentleman said, we're talking about our grandchildren and we're talking about the generations beyond that. And still I come back to my personal feelings in dealing with the facts. The facts are, is I don't think that this matters to us. In the essence of what we think that it matters to us, we're, we're debating and we're arguing in some, in some instances about things that are outside of our purview. As a counselor of Millinocket, to send a letter of support for something that's already in the works, something that's going to continue to divide because they're gonna do what they want to do anyway. So this letter does not have my support because I do not support the bill. Because I don't believe that as a council of Millinocket, that it's my purview to do so. And I'll end with that.
Thank you very much. Anyone else, Counselor Danforth?
Um, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I appreciate hearing from the other counselors and, and Counselor DeBain. Appreciate what you just said and you're talking about that you did it, you know, a gut check, I've been doing that for the last couple of days too and trying to learn more about this and been listening to, um, what mostly is the, the other side, the negatives, I say the negative side because since the beginning, I have been part of, you know, the pro, uh, National Monument, I have been on that side of it and, and have been for it. And, and still for it, and I do support this. Um, in doing that gut check, I've had several conversations and tried to understand the fact, and look at the, um, the map that was provided to us and the fact that it is a corridor, it is the, the road that is suggested. Um, you have to remember, that is private land and for however many years you've had access to private land. There hasn't been a problem with locals or from away using that private land. And from my understanding is that now this, we want to keep it so that it is available to the public. So because it is private land, other people, other entities own it, it could also, it could be shut down, right? At any time, from my understanding, what I learned, this will make sure that public is, the access will remain, um, for the public and to get to the monument. And the other things that people were, the other facts are what was, um, what I learned in response to people's concern about access to the camps. I think we heard that tonight too, that that's not going to be denied, that's not going to be changed. And I don't see this as a land grab now, and I, I don't, I don't think the way others, and it's probably just my experiences as far as dealing in fear. Um, I'm more trusting than some, and probably people have told me that that's to my detriment at times, but for something like this that, um, I believe in and I'm in favor of it, and it's because I've done some of my homework as well for my gut check. Because the other thing people are saying, oh, they're going to take the land, well, it's written to this bill that, you know, prohibition of the use of eminent domain, there's nothing in this act, um, that that could, you can acquire land. They're going to have to ask the landowners and if you come to a landowner that does not want to sell, then the deal, it stops. You know, it doesn't go any further, so based on this bill and based on the homework that I've done in my gut, gut check, I feel comfortable moving forward and my vote will be for this letter of support. To go. Senator King.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Pellis here.
Um, I disagree with the idea that, uh, it's not worth an effort to speak on this or, but a letter simply because it is going to be tracked down, that can't hurt, ever, at all. And playing off, uh, uh, just Fanjoy's comments and Counselor Danforth, uh, change is coming, it has come, look what's happened in the last twenty years. Speaking, you know, dressed up like wanting what we had yesterday, twenty years ago. Go up the Golden Road and you hit any off-road, climb any ridge, when you think, that's not there today. Today you have specified, like, go. specified, like, go. And that's because the private landowners sold corporations probably, or they don't want the, uh, liability that allowing the public to take their vehicles even to their territory. So you're at the mercy of change, no matter what. And I would prefer to have, and I've been behind the national monument right from the beginning, see the benefit that's being reaped by some communities and businesses along that way. We need to have this not only to help find a continued continued success, but help our town. So. I'm still where I've always
Thank you.
For.
Thank you, Counsel. No? Uh, uh, one more, and then we're gonna.
So, um, to address your comments, Jesse, um, I think we, uh, have to realize that Millinocket is not an island and that we're part of the Katon Highlands and that these things, uh, will benefit the region as far as economics go. I want you to try to buy a piece of land on the Grindstone Road and compare the price that you'll have to pay today to before the park was there. So there are distinct economic advantages, um, that people in the region, and I get your point, it's not in Millinocket, but I think we have to open our eyes and look at our region and how it will benefit the region and not be, um, uh, isolated on an island. Thank you.
One more.
I was directly referenced, I would like to.
Yes, certainly.
Um. Former Counsel Jackson, I prefer to be expected that way as well. I called you Counsel Jackson when you was up here, so. Um. Not split hairs though, but you're, you're, you're absolutely right. But I'm not a regional counselor. And I do look at data. I do not see much growth in the town of Medway. A, a matter of fact, I talked to two business owners in one in East Millinocket, one in Medway that regretfully, now they probably won't openly admit this because they are part of the larger community, but they regret doing that. So I'm not speaking on whether I'm for or against the, the national monument. I'm not saying that at all. I'm just saying the numbers that we were projected back then have not come to fruition now. And nobody has data. As Fangjoy even said, there isn't any data for that because it hasn't happened. So the access that we were hoping for and waiting for back then, if we were gonna become a community that embraced the monument, never happened. That's what I have to, I have to go on reality, not what we hope. So I do take those into consideration when I make my decisions, and I still think that this bill is not within or this, this document, which is beautifully crafted, by the way, Mr. Manager, I, I do approve. I approve of the letter the way it's crafted, because it actually says the majority, because I went into this knowing that it was probably gonna win by a majority decision. I just want the offices to know that are gonna get this document after we're through, know that it's not a majority, I mean, that it's not a unified decision. Millinocket is not unified in this. So we can't present that. Yes, we vote as one body and we collectively have that vote, but the, the vote is uh, it's not in, in unison, because we're not all of us.
Yes, you know.
So, that's my only point, is that I think you guys get it. I don't, don't want to beat it anymore, just go ahead.
I'm gonna let it go one more time, and then we're gonna go ahead and, because this, I think we're now getting to the point where we're beating this thing to death. I know.
Gil Fangjoy, I, I just had to, I just have to address Counsel Dume, your, um, um, comments about, uh, no economic impact, and I realized, well, okay. Data. Okay, alright, I got some data. So I, I, I forgot I had this. No, it's not. Um. There was an economic impact study done in twenty twenty, so it's not up to date. It was pre-COVID. Um, and it says the National Parks, and this was done by, um, Robert Patterson, who is a principal, uh, with, uh, Industrial Economics Incorporated, um, and some other, some other people. The National Park Service estimates that the monument received approximately forty-one thousand visitors in twenty twenty, and that associated spending supported three point three million dollars in economic activity, thirty-eight jobs and a million dollars in wages and salary. Uh, business owners representing the hospitality, real estate and retail sectors recognize the monument as a key feature that attracts people to the area. So I've got a little data for you, and that's their opinions, their opinions that they, that they drew from. This is just a brief uh, versus the whole study. They're happy to share that whole study with you though. Um, business owners report growth in sales and employment since the monument was established. This is confirmed by Maine Bureau of, uh, Maine Revenue Services and U.S. Census, Census data, analysis of data for monuments redesign, and then they're talking about being re-designated as map, as national parks, it would increase about twenty-five percent more. Um. The, uh, uh, existing stakeholder partnerships will enable the communities in the region to fully realize the enhanced economic activities. So there, there is data, there has been a study, um, and it, it was incredibly favorable, and I'm sure it's just grown since then, because that was twenty twenty. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. I did let her go. I, I, I'm gonna give you your shot, Jim, because.
I'll for a vote. I guess the biggest question here is, people, is do we really wanna trust the federal government on this? Do we really wanna see this expansion go on? And with the data she's talking about, they've inflated the numbers of traffic through there, they've included the snowmobile traffic that travels through. They've inflated the numbers on their visit, on their visitation. So it, you know, that when, when you deal with these people, they don't tell the truth, as I said right from the very beginning. If they told the truth, we wouldn't be here, this issue wouldn't be in front of us.
Thank you. The vote's been called.
Offer. Thank you.
Oh.
Okay. Uh. You're gonna have to go ahead and, uh, vote on this, all discussion stops. Uh, all those favor, uh, calling the vote? Uh, Counsel Higgins?
No.
Counsel Mackin?
Nay.
Counsel Dume?
No.
Counsel Danforth?
Excuse me, we're voting on calling for the vote, not on.
Just calling for the vote. When you do Robert's rules, when the vote is called,
You need a second.
You need a second, which we had, and you'll need two thirds of the voting body to guarantee that you can move forward. That's what we're doing right now. We're calling, we're, we're voting on the call.
Voting on the call, okay, sorry.
Okay, so we're just voting on the call for a vote. It's the
Yes.
Seconded, Counsel Higgins.
Okay.
Yay.
Counsel Mackin?
Aye.
Counsel Dume?
Aye.
Counsel Pelletier?
Aye.
Counsel Danforth?
Aye.
Counsel McGowan? Chair Midor, aye, okay? Calling on the vote. On the order one sixty-two dash twenty twenty-four, Counsel Higgins, how do you vote?
Nay.
Counsel Mackin?
Nay.
Counsel Dume?
No.
Counsel Danforth?
Aye.
Counsel McGowan? Counsel Pelletier?
Aye.
Chair Midor, aye, the motion fails four to three. Reports and Communications, Warrant Committee for the July eleventh, twenty twenty-four council meeting will be Counsel Mackin and myself, all right? Okay. Uh, Chair Committee reports. Counsel, do you have one? Counsel Danforth?
Uh, excuse me, yes, from the age friendly, I don't have a, a committee report, but I just wanna remind people, we're moving into the Fourth of July celebrations, and I'm hoping people will attend the Millinocket Farmers and Artisan Market on Saturday, uh, July sixth.
Absolutely.
January twenty-two. I hope to see you there.
Anything else? Any other committee reports? Mr. Manager, you look puzzled.
I received the patient as a community leader to meet the grand opening of the Dunkin' Donuts location, I was ordering a, a, your sad and I was planning to attend this Saturday from ten to one. I they're gonna have cuppy and iced cuppy.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, and a ribbon cutting, and a few other things, uh. I was given a, a, um, oh.
I think everybody got that.
Yes.
As like a mass email.
Yes.
I was given one directly, so through the drive, so I I just wanted to make sure that you all knew they, they would like, uh, some community leaders to be present for uh, the shinnig.
Okay, Saturday from ten to one.
Saturday from ten to one.
Okay.
Cuppy. And iced cuppy.
And, and the cutting, if I may, the cutting of the ribbon is our, uh, local celeb, uh, Mr. Tom Malcolm.
Oh.
I thought you weren't allowed to use sharp things.
I thought for sure you was gonna say jab.
Tom is the one that is allowed to use the scissors.
Well, anybody, please, take advantage of the, uh, the opportunity to, uh, be part of the grand opening of Dunkin' Donuts that haven't been going through the drive-through every day since it opened up. Uh, certainly. Uh, well, let's go to the two-minute comment. Uh, just two minutes comment, anybody who has anything to address the council with, you have two minutes, please do not address any individual counselor, but the body as a whole, and, uh, if there's any questions, we will respond back to you, Counsel, uh, former Counselor, this.
I just got a question. I do a lot of walking.
Mm-hmm.
I think most of you know. Walking Main Street, we have Fourth of July coming up. I know we're in dispute with the, the neighbor next door with his fire and whatever's going on. Why is it that the fence is on the sidewalk? It's taken up probably a third of the sidewalk. I think it's time we have the right, I think, to take that side, take that fence and get it off the sidewalk. While we got Fourth of July coming up, with a lot of people gonna be walking on sidewalks. It's on our property.
Right? Right. It isn't, you're absolutely.
Why can't we just pick it up? I'll even help, I'll come down.
Absolutely.
I'll be more than happy to come down and help move that.
Right, yeah, it's in the minutes.
Do we?
Well, you.
Can we do it? Uh, shouldn't be an issue.
My understanding of the fence code for commercial property, you know, to that it would be impossible to meet the criteria, given the location and, and the surrounding buildings inside one. Uh. I'm, I'm not into the, the doucha, the doubts of that myself.
Uh.
Tom, do you have any other details or input that you could share along that? I I hate to call you on the spot, but I know you've been working with Mr. Benjamin back and forth.
We could make Mr. Benjamin put that up onto the lawn. If it falls off the lawn and hits somebody on our sidewalk, we're liable. You can do whatever you wanna do. We can move it if that's what you wanna do.
So if we, if this fence falls and hits somebody.
There's no way on commercial property, you gotta get a fence in.
Right. Because of the slope that's there.
Well, it wouldn't have done.
Oh, you got it right, yeah, okay.
Technically, it has to be twenty feet from the property line, with the commercial property. And no? I thought it was twenty, it's not twenty, but well, ten. Okay, ten.
Do I hear five?
Bingo.
Commercial property, not personal.
So basically, it's a liability issue if the fence were to be paced off the sidewalk and if for some reason tumbled onto somebody watching the parade, the town could be liable.
Make him move it. That's his fence, it's on our property, make him move it on back on his property, and then he's liable. We shouldn't have to be walking by that fence.
I, I'm not.
It's on my sidewalk, I want it off. Make him move it, not us. Then it's not our liability. A fence should be there.
No, I, I don't disagree with you. Anyone else?
Perhaps if we build a wall.
No, we're not doing any walls.
Huh?
Uh. Yes, I, Miss, Madam Clerk.
Town Clerk, Diana Lake men, I'm just taking the opportunity in the public forum to remind of the community that we are closed July fourth and fifth for the Fourth of July celebrations. It's coming up.
Thank you. Tomorrow.
And also tomorrow, Friday, um, yes.
Year end.
For year end, fiscal year end, we are closing at noon time.
Okay.
Say that louder.
Yeah, I fear, I, I heard it. I'm looking for a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Motion made by Counsel Dume, second by Counsel McGowan, uh. Any council discussion? No. All those in favor, Counsel Higgins?
Aye.
Counsel Mackin?
Aye.
Counsel Pelletier?
Right.